Well, now distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, welcome back to the afternoon sessions of the sixth international conference on Action with Women and Peace. Well, as a facilitator, I think that our audience today is making my role very easy because everyone is keeping the best time management possible and it's very easy for me to start on time. So thank you very much on my part. So with that, we'll start our special session, Seeking Peace in Myanmar: Women as Catalysts for Change. And first, we will start off with a very special guest, the Honorable Isjuli Isabel Bishop, the Special Envoy of the UN Secretary General on Myanmar, for her opening statement. She has firmly prioritized the WPS issues in her mandate as a special envoy. And so we'd like to invite her and listen to what she has to say before the panel session begins. Please welcome her with a big round of applause.
Thank you so much for this opportunity to make a few remarks ahead of the panel discussion on the change that is needed in Myanmar. And I'm particularly delighted that we have a dedicated session on Myanmar for, as I said in my earlier remarks, there is a risk that this could become a forgotten crisis, notwithstanding the depth and scale of the violence and the issues that are affecting the people of Myanmar as a result of the conflict and chaos in the country. I am delighted that we have such a range of expertise on the panel, even Maesab E. Few joining us online. But you will hear from a number of people who are truly expert in the field and I'm honored to have the opportunity to listen to them. The conflict in Myanmar reflects some of the worst aspects of conflicts around the world in that there is a disproportionate impact on women and girls. And we see that so often in conflicts around the world and sadly, tragically, Myanmar is no different. You may have heard the statistics that there are currently over eighteen and a half million people in need of urgent humanitarian assistance and it's estimated that about 9.7 million are in fact women and girls. Three million people have been internally displaced and the fighting, the military operations continue, the armed conflict continues, notwithstanding the impact on the people of Myanmar. You will be aware that so many people have fled Myanmar seeking protection in bordering nations, particularly Bangladesh is bearing the brunt of those leaving the country and seeking asylum, seeking protection. On the borders of Myanmar, we now have some of the largest, if not the largest refugee camps in the world. And given the scale of other conflicts around the world, you can see how desperate the situation is. I have been overwhelmed by the resilience and courage and focus and determination of women's groups and organizations within and outside Myanmar. My first visit as Foreign Minister of Australia to Myanmar back in 2014, when there was a great deal of hope and optimism for the future of the country, was marked by many events. It was the ASEAN Regional Forum hosted by Nepidore at that time. But I did take the opportunity to meet with women's groups and women who have a different perspective, a different insight, and provide a view that you don't hear through perhaps other official diplomatic channels. And so I urge you, whenever you visit another country where there is a conflict going on, listen to the voices of the women and the girls because their view can differ markedly. Women are being impacted in so many ways. The conscription laws that are having such a devastating effect on young people in particular are affecting older women because now they are being left to look after the homes, look after the agricultural land. They are having to bear the burden of single households as young men in particular are being taken away to fight for the various warring parties. Women are mobilizing their communities. Women are providing the aid in some of the areas that are affected by the conflict and areas where the administration is not able to provide aid. And women are documenting the human rights violations and abuses so that there can be accountability for without accountability, there's little chance of reconciliation. I was very pleased that the Women's Peace Security Agenda has been embraced in relation to Myanmar at the UN. In fact, last September, I said earlier that we had arranged for 12 women from Myanmar, female Myanmar Voices, to be in New York, to meet with member state representatives, to advocate the plight of women and girls and young people in particular in Myanmar. And it was very powerful to hear directly from them. So I'm looking forward to hearing more, to learning more. I have adopted an approach of listening to all of the voices of Myanmar so that I can understand the perspectives and the different viewpoints with the aim of finding common ground somewhere, somehow, to ensure that the people of Myanmar get the better future that they deserve. So thank you all for taking part and I'm so pleased there are so many people here at this conference to focus on what is truly a diabolical situation in Myanmar. Thank you.
Thank you once again for your remarks and of course, setting the tone for the panel discussion. I'm sure that our panel of experts will have more to contribute to the discussion. But thanks to your remarks, I think that it has set the right direction. Thank you. And now I'd like to invite our moderator and our panelists to the stage. So ladies and gentlemen, first, let's welcome them up to the stage with a big round of applause. Please. Thank you very much for joining us. And before we begin, I'd like to introduce our moderator to you. Our moderator is none other than Professor Shin Hee Su, the Chair of the Board of Directors of the Korea Center for UN Human Rights Policy. So with that, I turn the microphone over to our moderator. Please welcome her with a big round of applause.
Thank you. Thank you very much and good afternoon. I'm very happy to moderate this session because I've been engaged with the situation in Myanmar, Oboma, at the time, from the 1990s early on. And this year, one of the ethnic groups, Shan, is celebrating its organizational establishment for Jubilee, which is 25 years of history, although the conflict started back then. So I think that this special session deserves much attention. But I also would like to give a little background of this Action with Women and Peace initiative, which started in 2018. And this annual conference is the sixth and I've been participating and involved from the beginning in this initiative and attended all of the past conferences. And there has been civil society advisory committee engaged with this initiative from the beginning. And there has been strong suggestion and commitment that this initiative and this annual conference should be emphasizing three points. First is victim-centered, especially because Korea has this painful experience of so many women drafted into military slavery by Japan, so-called comfort woman issue. So it should be always in the background of the conference, although whether it is visible on the program or not. The second emphasis is on Asia. It should be Asia-focused because there are other global conferences or WPS agenda led by other countries like the UK or other countries. But there is no Asian focus. So we should give more attention on the situation in Asia. And then the final point is there should be participation of youth because youth are the future. So there has been, from the beginning, participation of youth in terms of contest, things like that, which I hope the future annual conferences will also continue to have these three points of emphasis. And with that, I'm very happy to moderate this session and I think this is a good combination on experts on Myanmar. And we'll have one person from Myanmar, joined by online, I hope it will show shortly, from Myanmar but who is staying outside of Myanmar, who will speak about the current situation or the past history of the conflict. We have two experts from the UN institutions, UN Agency, from UN Women and UN HCR. And then we have two experts from the UN-related or civil society. So if time permits, I can have a long introduction to all five of them. But because of the time constraints, I will not go into all that. But let me first ask Maesab E. Few, joining online, because she's a national from Myanmar, Oboma. And I will ask her, what has been the history of conflict and the current situation? And then what has women played as a catalyst in this peace-keeping or peace-building of all these years? So I think that would be proper to start with Maesab E. Few. And as come along, I will ask other experts to give us more updates. She connected. Maesab E. Few?
Yes. I think you can hear me well. Thank you so much for inviting me for this important event. And I am very honored to be invited and talk about the conflict in Myanmar. So it has always been clear to us and thankfully, it is becoming increasingly clear to everyone else that women have never been passive observers in peace-building efforts in Myanmar. The women have consistently stood at the forefront of peace-building, claiming their spaces from community grassroots level to nation-building activism rooted in compassion and resilience and of course, in gender equality. So our contribution, although often under acknowledged, has been very important in bolstering dialogue and mitigating conflict. So for instance, in current communities, women have long sought out mediators, using their deep-rooted roles within families and communities to resolve disputes between conflicting parties, build trust and promote long-term harmony. And after the devastation of cyclone Agus in 2008, women in the ALD Delta led relief efforts, organizing aid distributions and crucially, ensuring that not only women but all marginalized groups receive the necessary support. This show of leadership helped stabilize these communities and prevent this conflict. And in the 2010, like Buddhist and Muslim women in Mandalay form grassroots peace groups to promote interfaith, understanding and cooperation, which tackle sectarian divisions head-on and promoted solidarity and mutual respect across religious lines. The women also play and continue to play critical roles in formal peace processes. During negotiations between the government and ethnic armed groups in the 2010, women's organizations ensured that gender perspective were part of the political settlement text known as the Union Accord. So our participation in the series of Hanglang peace conferences and perpetuary civil society dialogue leading up to the conference further underscored the importance of inclusivity in national reconciliation efforts, challenging patriarchal norms that marginalize women from decision-making spaces and discourse. I mean, as Professor Hee Su are known, the formation of the Women's League of Oboma, WLV, stands as a testament to women's commitment to peace and equality since the 90s. WLV just celebrates their 25th anniversary yesterday. And WLV has tirelessly walked to unite women across ethnic lines, advocating for justice, human rights and gender equality as foundational to peace building. The Myanmar Women Peace Builders have consistently bridged divisive, championed marginalized voices and bolstered community resilience. There are too many examples from pre-independence to recent history. But let us speak about contemporary efforts now. The combinations of the critical value and support we provided during COVID and the post-COVID reality we live in have seen women's efforts grow bolder and more strategic despite the increase in repression and life-threatening risks from the military junta. So for the sake of time, I will limit my response on recent approaches to four key areas. The first is leadership in humanitarian relief. We have shown exemplary efforts in providing lifesaving aid, such as food distribution and shelter for displaced communities, showing the need for flexibility in peace-building during active conflict. While we do this, we have also incorporated gender-sensitive approaches to protect against gender-based violence and promote gender equality. The second is advocacy for systemic change. Women Peace Builders have courageously challenged systemic patriarchy by demanding meaningful representation in national dialogue. Our advocacy resists tokenism, highlighting the critical need for substantive inclusion of women in decision-making processes. We challenge entrenched narratives that dismiss women as stakeholders or as passive observers. We advocate that gender equality is a necessary component of any democratic society. And crucially, we advocate that gender equality is not a component to be achieved after democracy is restored, but a component that should be strived towards alongside the democratic struggle. The third is strengthening local governance. In regions controlled by ethnic armed organizations, women have stepped into governance role, demonstrating their capacity to lead even in the most challenging circumstances. Through shadow governance structures, we advocate for policies that reflect community priorities while championing women rights. These efforts bridge gaps between former and informal governance systems, ensuring that local leadership is inclusive and responsive. The fault, but not the least, is developing and promoting grassroots peace infrastructure. Women alongside our May allies have also developed grassroots networks that support women's participation in governance, public resolutions and social cohesion efforts. These networks train and empower women to become advocates for their community, creating a ripple effect that extends beyond immediate conflict zones. I would like to end on the note that women in Myanmar are not only peace builders, we are revolutionaries, visionaries and healers. Our work is grounded in life experiences and challenges deeply entrenched patriarchal and militarized systems. Thank you.
Thank you, Maesab E. Few, joining online. Actually, when I visited Myanmar in 2013, we had high hopes at that time because there was a training organized by Gender Equality Network that she has been working on regarding legislation on violence against women. So there was a training session in Nepidore, the capital of Myanmar, with government authorities, police and all the people. And I was invited as a resource person to talk about the legislations on violence against women. And then we had high hopes at that time, back then, 10 years ago. And Maesab E. Few, after the coup, she organized women's organizations into Women Human Rights Defenders Network. So has been very critical in her work. And thank you very much for joining online. And I recall that she says that she is keeping herself and then all these efforts as visionary and hopeful for the future, which I think we need. So she gave us the situation and then how women have been engaged. But I would like to ask next for two experts. First, Mr. Richard Jose and then after that, Professor Yang Yi Li, to give their perspective. Because Richard, as a person from International Crisis Group, has been the Myanmar advisor specifically and has been engaged for a long time in the situation in Myanmar. So first, you go. And then Yang Yi Li also, of course, she has been the special rapporteur on the situation of Myanmar, human rights situation in Myanmar, and has been engaged on it. But also, she has been the advocate for children's rights. But in this context, we hope to hear from her what has been the situation. So if you can give us more insight into how the situation unfolded and how women had played any role in peace-building and in this process.
Thank you very much and thank you to the Republic of Korea, especially for putting on this very important panel. You know, I think anyone who's spent any time in Myanmar quickly recognized that this is a country whose political institutions, whose institutions of power are dominated by old men. It's a gerontocracy in a way. And so when the military coup happened on the 1st of February 2021, at the vanguard of the response on the streets were young women and men. And so this movement against the coup was more than just a resistance movement. It was, as Maesab E. Few said, a revolutionary movement, a revolutionary moment for Myanmar, where there was an opportunity not only to overturn decades of authoritarian military rule but also to overturn some of the underpinnings of that, the societal and political underpinnings of that. And it thrust into the forefront a new generation of people who thought very differently from their peers of the past. And I think that offered an enormous amount of hope. That hope was dashed in a way as the military launched an incredibly violent response to these peaceful demonstrations. And that caused this movement to be forced to morph into an armed resistance movement from a civil disobedience movement. So the role of women who'd been there, not only at the front lines of the conflict but also taking part in this civil disobedience movement, they were most of the teachers who participated. They were many of the health workers who participated. They were on or leading many of the strike committees as well. And at that moment, when it pivoted to an armed resistance, what happened was that the traditional gender roles started to be reasserted, that in military institutions, things resorted to a sort of male-dominated approach. And so the women that we've talked to over the years since the coup in all walks of life and in all aspects of the revolution, while they're still doing an enormous amount and are enormously important, speak of this fear of that moment of hope at the beginning starting to dissipate a little as armed resistance has been the primary, almost prominent mode of responding to the coup. And to say a little bit more about what that looks like, women have been very active in the armed resistance movement. They have joined armed resistance groups, new ones. They've joined old ethnic armed groups who've been around for decades. They've gone through the same basic training as men. They put on the same uniforms as men. But they are not sent to the front lines to fight. They are kept in traditional roles, tailoring, cooking, providing administrative support, nursing. And the women that we've spoke to about this express a great deal of frustration because this has a huge impact on them at a personal level. It makes them question, why did they join up? What are they contributing to this anti-coup resistance movement? And of course, it means that although they may share a uniform and a rank with their male peers, they feel somehow that they don't have the same respect, the same experience because they have not engaged in combat duties. And I think this reiterates the point that General Ingrid Hejder made at the beginning, that it's incredibly important to have this inclusive military structures as well when we look forward to the peace in the future. So in addition to the personal toll and the frustration, it's had a much broader impact. It means that women are not being promoted as quickly in these organizations as men. It means that they are not finding their way in the numbers that they should be into decision-making positions. And that means that their voices are being marginalized from this armed resistance movement. And I don't think we need a lot of imagination to wonder what this will look like in a future where there is a peace process, where there is an opportunity to craft a new nation. Those voices will not be there in the strength that they should be and need to be. All is not lost. Women are not taking this lying down. There are all kinds of initiatives to try and address this. And women's roles continue to be incredibly important across civil society in providing support to IDPs and politically as well. But as we've seen this shift happen over the last few years, there's also been a feeling that the political opportunity has also not been capitalized on as it should have been. So after the coup, the opposition political structures, the National Unity Government and other opposition bodies, were quite forward-leaning in appointing young people, women, people from ethnic minorities into positions of leadership within these institutions. And they looked very different from the kinds of institution, political institution you would have seen in Myanmar in the past. But over time, the women that we talked to tell us that although they might be sitting in the seat, although they might have the formal position, their views are often not taken seriously enough, that they feel a little bit marginalized from decision-making. And the military aspect, I mean, it is difficult. It is a challenge. It will take time for armed groups to sort of reimagine the role that women can take within military organizations. But the political institutions, this should be the easier lift. This should be something that is achievable. And I think we also have to focus there in making sure that women's roles in these opposition political bodies are not only there on paper, but really there in the decision-making bodies as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your description of how deeply the gender inequality is embedded in the society and then what kind of opportunities we should look for in this situation. And I'll ask Professor Yang Yi Li to say anything she would like to say because she has been involved very deeply as the special rapporteur on the human rights situation in Myanmar.
Thank you very much. And I'd also like to join my voice in thanking my country's Ministry of Foreign Affairs for including this special session on Myanmar so that, as the special envoy said, Myanmar doesn't become a forgotten conflict. I served as a special rapporteur for six years and right after I left the mandate, the coup started. And so myself and two former colleagues who were with the FFM, the Fact-Finding Mission, on Myanmar, we organized a group called Special Advisory Council for Myanmar. And people asked us SACM is our acronym. And they said, you know, the HUNTER uses SAC. We use SAC hyphen M, which in English would say SACM. So we've been in existence for four years. We thought we would not be existing after six months. I don't want to repeat what Maisabe Pue and what Richard Horsy just said. But what Maisabe Pue said really resonates with me is that the women are not just peacebuilders. They are the visionaries, they're the leaders. And we tend to forget that. We tend to focus on women as being victims, but not as the revolutionary visionary leaders. I was privileged to witness back in 2014 and 15, when it was Utenzain's regime government, where the national ceasefire agreement was being signed. And it was the final consultation period. And I saw, witnessed some ethnic community leaders who were led, delegations were led by women, but that was very, very few. And they were attending the final rounds, which never came to fruition. I just want to add a few numbers, statistics, beyond the fact that women are the first, are at the forefront of any conflict. And especially in Myanmar, the new conscription law says that women are also to be conscripted. And women have been fleeing from forced conscription by the military. Of course, women have voluntarily joined the ethnic revolutionary groups. But recently, according to AAPP, Assistance Association for Political Prisoners, the three-months time period of this year, from September to November, 150 women were killed by the HUNTER. Among them, 107 died from HUNTER's airstrike. We at SACM, we produced a paper on effective control. It's obvious that the military is losing territorial grounds, a lot of territorial grounds. And the loss of the territorial grounds means that the only advantage they have are using airstrikes. And women are being killed. In the same period, 49 women were arrested by the HUNTER. So the women really bear the brunt of the conflict in Myanmar today. Thank you.
Thank you, Yangi, for this additional information as well as statistics, you know, on how many women were killed, et cetera. It's all a gloomy picture. But if we are trying to look for opportunities, yeah. I'm wondering whether the situation has been progressing, you know, positively any further. And maybe it's time for the two UN agencies, UN Women as well as UNHCR, from the institutional and UN perspective, you know, what kind of role have you played as an international actor? Try to help and promote peace and then trying to provide assistance to women in this struggle. So I first ask to Kristin Arab. Ms. Kristin Arab is the regional director of UN Women Asia-Pacific Office. And then Regional Director Hee Young Chun from UNHCR, both from your institutional perspectives.
Thank you, thank you very much, Hee Su. And it's a pleasure to be on a panel chair by you. I was trained by you and your colleagues when I first joined UNIFAM many years ago on this seat now. I think for UN Women on the ground, and as Special Envoy Bishop said, right now, and my colleague will speak more broadly, he will speak more broadly about the humanitarian situation. But approximately 52% of the population that are living under humanitarian needs are women. And so a huge part of what we have been doing on the ground has been to first ensure that there's data and analytics that can illustrate and highlight this very specific needs within a humanitarian context that women are facing. There's, you know, from the storms to the conflict itself, they're quite considerable. And as all of the panel members have said, the women are not only the recipients, but they're the guiders of what should be done and what are the most immediate priorities that the humanitarian agencies need to address. Specifically, we treat within, there's an interagency body called the Gender and Humanitarian Assistance Body, GHIHA. And so we do right now monthly gender analytics on what the situation is, where are the specific needs. These can range everywhere from reproductive health needs onwards to life-saving assistance on the ground. We do a great deal in partnership on the ground with women-led organizations as well as the UN itself on gender-based violence services, including sexual and gender-based violence services, and trying to identify some sustainable livelihood support for the women who are most impacted from humanitarian needs. And it, of course, is very challenging. UN Women's strategy in these situations is first to make sure that the women's organizations at the grassroots level are involved in the decision-making of any type of humanitarian response in their communities. And that they have both the resources and the capacities they need for the voice they already have. So the voices are already there and they don't need assistance. They just need a space. But the sustained assistance to their organizations to be able to deliver to the scale that originally, when some of these organizations were developed, they didn't anticipate that scale, that they would have to respond to such a large group of people and a near constant state of demand. So we're always very careful in UN Women. We always talk in peace and security about the need for women's leadership. And I think we need to be very careful in saying it's the need to create the space for the leadership that is there and that is happening day to day. This morning, Special Envoy Bishop gave an example of when she was in the Solomon Islands. Those are leaders already sitting outside the parliament, articulating what needs to happen. Now, what has to happen in order for that to happen is sustained financial and human support to those organizations. And for all NGOs, that's a challenge. We do have a global fund, the Women Peace and Humanitarian Fund, which I always get the title incorrect. And it is very focused both on ensuring that women-led organizations all around the world both have the long-term capacities they need as well as surge immediate support when there's a humanitarian disaster. And we don't see it as an either-or, it has to be sustained. A few things I want to highlight when you're talking about the challenges that women face. And we're familiar with making sure that women have access to reproductive health, making sure that women have the legal aid they need, the psychosocial support they need, the safe shelter they may need. But a lot of what we do more globally around women in conflict situations is we are increasingly working with women-led organizations to see not just about their physical security, but their digital security. We're trying globally to do a lot more with women-led organizations so that they have cybersecurity, so that they can understand how to protect themselves. We know that women's human rights defenders are targeted. We know that they need these skill sets, they and their organizations, how to mitigate against that. We also know that many women human rights defenders are among the most vulnerable to deep fake and to everything that comes with that and how hard that is to shake off. We also try to focus on a diverse range of women's voices because by no means is the women's movement in any one country like-minded. And that's a good thing, that's what makes it strong. So we do try to focus heavily from that angle. I think the last thing I would highlight is that in order for women's voices to be engaged, there needs to be fairly transparent processes in terms of social cohesion and stability. And so globally, we try in many different conflicts around the world as part of a broader UN system to first foster that environment and then bring the women and their voices into that environment. But I would stop there.
Thank you very much. Yeah, big applause. Thank you for your explanation about what kind of assistance is UN Women has been giving in terms of the kind of assistance women would need and also the need for their voices, which has been always active and vocal, but also the new sort of threat in terms of digital security as well as other aspects, yeah. So now let's go to the UNHCR, whether you are providing the same kind of assistance or different kind of, from the same humanitarian perspective. So Hee Young.
Thank you, thank you so very much. And thank you for the government of the Republic of Korea to invite UNHCR to this very meaningful session. The positive thing about going last is you learn from all the wise remarks from the colleagues before. Perhaps on my side, I served in Myanmar from November 2020 to October 2022. And in my current function, I cover Myanmar as part of Asia-Pacific. So maybe I can bring you a little bit the women leaders, the girls that I met in the field. And of course, you know, Kristina has mentioned what UN Women does in Myanmar and other settings, similar settings. We always complement each other. And in the UN, as you know, we have different roles and mandates, right? So for UNHCR, I mean, we look into the refugees, the stateless peoples, and also the internally displaced people. So when I landed in Myanmar in November 2020, we had about 300,000 internally displaced, most of them in Rohingya state, mainly Rohingya. And my task was then to work with the government and civil society to look into the situation of this particular group in Myanmar and also to help bringing back the many refugees that were in Thailand, to the southeast of Thailand. Situation changed after 1st February 2021. And we tried to access as many people as possible on the ground together with other UN agencies and civil society organizations. And I must say that during the two years I spent in Myanmar, I was so, so humbled by the strength, by the kindness and the resilience of the women. It doesn't matter if you are Kachin, if you are Shan, if you are Kayak, Kayin, you know, Rohingya. I mean, the strength and then the kindness at the same time of these people really, really touched my heart. And in a way, I've been very blessed in a way because I was allowed before and after 1st February to travel quite extensively throughout Myanmar. And I've seen the situation of the Rohingya people, especially northern Rohingya. But also I've been able to travel through Sagan, Magwe, Kayak, Kayin, Kachin. And you can see that, and there are some points that some of the colleagues mentioned here, inter-ethnic interface. I think something that brought lots of women together and also the people of Myanmar was, it doesn't matter maybe your ethnicity or your, of course, you have the particularities, but the situation brought unity, let's say, in the people. One dimension that I wanted to highlight here is that the situation of Myanmar is not only in Myanmar. I mean, we do have the Rohingya people in Bangladesh, but also we have Myanmar people. It's, we call it in UNHCR a situation because we have the country of origin. But we also have affected population, let's say, not only in Bangladesh, but also India, China in a way, Thailand, Indonesia, Malaysia, right? So if we look into peacebuilding, you know, women's participation, we also need to think of how we can involve the women leaders or those who are actually at the forefront of providing humanitarian assistance because we also need to be very honest in this sense. Of course, you know, we have been able to provide assistance to many, but at the end of the day, at the forefront are the Myanmar people, are the Myanmar organizations, and are the Myanmar mothers and the women leaders in the communities. So how to involve those women, those who have been displaced outside Myanmar, but also inside Myanmar? How to involve those young women and women in this return process, right? Because if we want to do a peacebuilding, peacemaking, peace process, of course, it's important the people who are inside Myanmar, but how to do that. And in the case of, for instance, the many Rohingya people that are staying in Bangladesh, for instance, we do have lots of different activities that foster leadership or fosters community participation. But then when they return, when the peace is accorded or when the situation is more conducive for them to return to the country, then we have to also have a situation where the leadership or the independence or economic independence or whatever that we are building or the women has acquired outside Myanmar should be able to use it inside and be able to access that type of right, right? So I think it's very important to look into the situation overall and think of the Myanmar people in Myanmar, but also in the peace process and thinking of the women leaders that I have met inside and outside Myanmar, how to include them in this process and discussions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Hee Young, for your contribution from UNHCR's point of view. Yeah, I've been visited once in the refugee camp, which was huge, you know, near the Myanmar-Tai border. And when the situation was more optimistic, all of, most of my friends went back to Myanmar. But then when the situation got worse, they all have to came out again, come out again to Thailand and other countries nearby. So I think it's, yeah, I'm happy that you raised this this point of how international community should assist both those, you know, who are inside as well as outside, especially from the refugee point of view, yeah. So now I would like to ask whether Maisabe Pue has any other suggestions, especially to the international community, what kind of action can be taken or should be taken, you know, from Burmese point of view, as a national point of view. And then I'll also ask Richard and Yangi whether you can have any points to add, you know, from not the UN agency's point of view, but as an expert point of view, yeah. First, Maisabe Pue, yeah. Do you have anything else to ask?
Thank you, thank you so much, you know. Like, it's very important to voice out the the voice from the community. So what I would like to highlight here is to protect and amplify the work of women peacebuilders in Myanmar. So the international community must take bold feminist and intersectional actions that address both immediate needs and long-term structural inequalities exhibited by the conflict. So I have a few points to suggest here. So one, through So, one, provide sustained and flexible funding. The donors must establish long-term flexible funding mechanisms that prioritize grassroots women organizations, ensuring they can adapt to shifting political, economics, and conflict dynamics. Number two, prioritize protection mechanisms. International actors should strengthen protection mechanisms for women activists and peace builders through programs like rapid response grants for relocation, physical and digital security training, and international advocacy to hold perpetrators accountable. Number three, integrate women voices in peace processes. Pressure stakeholders, including ASEAN and the UN, to unfold gender quotas in peace negotiations and transitional governance structures. So ensure women’s demands, particularly on justice and reparations, are included in peace agreements. Number four, support capacity building and knowledge sharing. Facilitate capacity building programs that center global knowledge and crisis while offering technical skills in negotiation, advocacy, and transitional justice. Number five, advocate for accountability and gender justice. International mechanisms must ensure accountability for gender-based crimes. Support survival center justice initiatives and amplify calls for reparations and truth-telling processes led by women. The last point, number six, elevate the role of intersectionality. Ensure that support strategies recognize and address the distinct challenges faced by ethnic minority women within minority groups like Rohingya women and LGBTQ+ communities. These are the, some of the recommendations I would like to, yeah, share with the international community. Thank you so, so much.
Thank you, May Sabeh Pue, yeah, for your request and recommendation on six points. I noticed that your first request was to have, to provide sustainable funding, sustained funding, and I think at this time of war going around currently, there have been all the resources sucking into these wars, and then women’s organizations are very much aware of this situation. And hopefully, this session will be a call to give that kind of funding and resource, as Kristine Arab has said, you know, devoted to that. But let me ask Yangi first, and then, yeah, Richard next, on your additional point.
In reference to what the international community can do, I think it’s important to invest in women’s movements for justice, accountability, for a durable peace. And we need to sort out some strategies in the needs of grassroots women in conflict areas and their visions for a peaceful future of coexistence. Myanmar is a country where it’s multi-ethnic, multi-religious, so the peaceful coexistence is a very important issue. Rape and sexual violence continue to be used as war weapons. The military has enjoyed seven decades of impunity, and rampant sexual and gender-based violence continues to this day. The international community must act in solidarity by listening to women and building trust and a better understanding of the relevant context and the solutions that grassroots women identify. And we, as the international community, must not lead nor rush, force, or speed up the process needed for genuine and meaningful on-the-ground processes. ASEAN is crucial and must also support Myanmar-led and owned dialogue processes. The four pillars of the WSP, we tend to forget, is the restoration, the relief and recovery, and this means equal distribution of aid to women and children. And I’ve noticed that in ethnic communities, it’s the women who are sharing this load to get the aids that doesn’t reach the ethnic communities. And some of you may not know that there is this thing called Friends of the Security Resolution 1375, which was, is an ad hoc informal group initiated by Canada. They must advocate more publicly, support the Myanmar women’s movement as key agents of change for new Myanmar, and support their ongoing efforts for justice and accountability. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Yangi, for your insights. Yes, Richard?
Thanks, yeah. I mean, I think to come back to the funding question, which is critical, because as Kristine said, the leaders are there, the institutions are there, the funding is not. But why is that? I mean, I think the problem is that the international funding architecture is not set up to deal with crises. You know, we’ve seen Myanmar, which received a huge amount of development assistance when, you know, there was a period of optimism, and then as soon as it went into a period of crisis, all of that was cut, and what you’re left with is humanitarian funding. And we know that global humanitarian funding cannot keep up with the demands upon it. It certainly can’t keep up and is not designed for a situation where a country and its economy has imploded. It can’t, it’s not designed to respond on that level. And yet, what else is there? Development funding obviously is designed for states and for institutions, and that’s not suitable. So I really think we need to go back to basics and think about how, you know, global funding can operate in a way which can respond to the needs that are out there. And we know these are going to be long-term needs. This is not something for a year or two that an emergency surge fund can respond to. I think the IFIs have a huge role to play in this, and they are stepping up in some contexts around the world, and I think more can be asked of them. But we need to rethink that architecture. The other point I would make is that, you know, we can focus, and we should focus, on the atrocities being carried out by the military, by the regime. Our ability to influence them is somewhat limited. We should also look at those institutions and actors who we do have greater ability to influence as well. I think it’s important to focus on the political institutions, as I said, of the opposition, to make sure we hold them to a high standard of not just paying lip service to women’s roles, to including youth, to including ethnic diversity, but actually that they operationalize this in the way that they work. And I think it’s incredibly important, and I’ve just lost my last point, so I’ll stop there. Thanks.
Thank you, yeah. Kristine, yeah, if you have any additional points?
I do, and I, you know, I was remiss in my start, because as UN Women, I also, I really, really want to commend the Republic of Korea as a Security Council member, about to, to keep this topic on the agenda. As regional directors, Heekun and I cover Afghanistan and we cover Myanmar, and they are both quite forgotten, but in particular Myanmar. So really, thank you to the Republic of Korea for making sure that this has been given the emphasis it needs. Why? Because it’s exactly what colleagues have just said. If there was peace tomorrow, the long-term impact of what’s already happened would take a decade to change. And we see too often that in the middle of the crisis, the women come forward, and as soon as the crisis starts to recede, the old structures come back. So Hi was very right to mention Cox Bazaar. The UN, the UNHCR is the administrator of a massive camp, as you know, in Bangladesh, of which the host country has had to absorb a great deal, and the UN works very closely. And you have the oddest things happening. There will be surges of kidnapping of young men in the camp, because camps replicate the conflict. And because there are periods of surges of kidnapping of young men to go back into Myanmar, it’s young women and older women who stay up all night. They stay up all night, they sleep in front of the doorstep, they sleep on the rooftops of their homes, and then they come into the shelters that we’ve set up, they’re not shelters, they’re spaces for integrated services for women, just to rest during the daytime, so that at night again, they can do that. So they are the first responders of security for their families. Now, if God willing, there is stability and peace and they can return home, that old-gendered stereotype of the man being the protector will fall in like that. In Afghanistan right now, a man feels significantly less safe on the street if he’s with a woman. I’ve never heard that in my career, of a man feeling less safe if he’s with a woman because of how much they are the targets of policing, of everything. So it’s, my point is that gender roles are so deeply entrenched that in the minute of a conflict, we can see women as the resilience, but when the conflict passes, we see a bunch of men over and over and over again. So that is where the importance of sustained financing and sustained voice is crucial, because it takes a long time for our bone marrow to change. Thank you.
Thank you for your additional points. Yes, although it is true that when the crisis is over, the deeply-rooted social unequal structure and gender roles come back, but I think there are also good examples from Korean women’s movement. For example, Korea suffered this long-intrenched gender stereotype, typical, and then limitations in women’s roles, but women’s movement, active women’s movement tried to change it very much from the 1970s. And then there was an old saying, like, if hen, the female chicken cries, then the whole family goes into bankruptcy. We used to have that kind of thing. And then women’s movement changed it into a new slogan, saying that if hen cries, she lays an egg, you know? So from a negative, more positive. And I think also women in Myanmar, the peace builders, women human rights defenders, have been actively trying to change this kind of gender role stereotype, because when I was on the committee on the Elimination of Discrimination Against Women SEDO Committee, the women activists brought the next generation of young women into the SEDO session, trained them. So I believe that there are young women who would like to change all that, and hopefully, yeah, this kind of rolling back into the old negative tradition will not continue in the near future, yeah? But, yeah, I take your call for more resources, you know, sustained funding, et cetera, yeah? Hae Kyung, do you want to add any points?
Yes, no, just to echo about the sustainable funding, and of course, as a humanitarian agency, we go to the field and we meet with the mothers and girls, and actually what they say on the ground, and these are people who sometimes have been displaced more than six, seven times, and they want jobs, right? They appreciate the assistance, the humanitarian assistance, but they want livelihoods, they want education, they want health medication, right? So I think that’s why from UNHCR, we are looking from the beginning to make our assistance sustainable, and then when it’s possible to give solutions, right? So with KOICA UNFPA, we are working in Kachin so that they can get a comprehensive assistance for those who are coming back. So I think it’s very important, what everybody has said, the IFIs, and on how in a principle, but you know, like, looking at the future of the people, the attention of the international community, and Korea as member of the Security Council, as Kristine also mentioned, they added, I don’t want to call it burden, but maybe they added commitment that we can have from the government on the situation in Myanmar. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, this special session is only for one hour, and we have to come to close, but I think our utmost message from this session is, first, we should not forget Myanmar in this current crisis all around the world. Second, we should try to bring changes from inside as well as from outside, giving all our attention and assistance, whether you are from the UN agencies, from the ASEAN member countries, or from other member states, or whether you are from the civil society. So don’t forget, and then provide sustained funding and assistance for the women in Myanmar and around Myanmar so that they can keep their effort on peace-building with resilience and with persistence, with revolutionary and visionary future in their mind. So I think this is the message that I would like to conclude the session with, and I thank for all the panelists for your excellent contribution, as well as for May Sabeh Pue, who joined from USA Online. Thank you very much for all, and thank you, Ms. Julie Bishop.
Thank you very much for the constructive discussions, and thank you for keeping Myanmar alive with our discussions as well. This brings us to the end of the special session, but before we